Okay, you're good to go.
Great, thank you. We're all set up and good to go. Mr. CEO, can I get you to turn your speaker off? Perfect. All right, welcome to everybody to our special meeting of council for this afternoon. Before I open the meeting, I'd just like to welcome everybody watching. This is our first live YouTube meeting since council unanimously approved live streaming and recording meetings for our residents for all meetings. So as everybody is aware, we've been live streaming our public hearings for both planning items and a local improvement district public hearing starting in April. In August, we decided that we should be looking for a more permanent solution during COVID. We had been having a speaker outside during the summer months so residents could hear our meetings and live streaming public hearings for residents to participate in. Long term, that's not a great solution. So in August, we began exploring a more permanent solution and we had different presentations from recording companies come in and present to council their options. And at the October 22 council meeting, we approved B and K Studios to be live streaming and recording all of our meetings for residents to watch our meetings. So we thank B and K Studios. We're excited for this service and this is going to be a great service for residents. In just looking, residents might be interested to know, we will be the third rural municipality in the capital region out of 18 municipalities to offer this service. So only two others, in addition to the city of Winnipeg, offer live streaming and recorded meetings right now. We will be the third in the region. So I'm very proud of that. West St. Paul has been leaders in the region. We have been one of the only ones to livestream our public hearings and provide residents access to our meetings during COVID. So I'm very proud of that. Before I call the meeting to order, I would just like council members to introduce themselves for everyone who might not be aware, and I will go around starting with Ward One.
Hello, everybody. I'm Counselor Eleanor Link. I'm Counselor for Ward One.
Thank you, Counselor Link. For Ward Two.
Hello, everybody. Counselor Ward Two, George Bessetti.
Thank you, and my deputy. And for Ward Three.
Hi, I'm Dorothy Clyber. I'm your counselor for Ward Number Three.
Well, thank you. Thank you. And for Ward Four.
Hello, my name is Stan Parag. I'm the Counselor for Ward Four. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, welcome to everybody and exciting to kick this off. So I'll get the meeting started. Be it resolved that the meeting be called to order and that the agenda for the meeting be adopted as circulated. Can I have a mover, please? Moved by Counselor Link, seconded. Counselor Beshetti, any discussion? Hearing and seeing none, I will call for the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. All right, our first bylaw that we are reviewing today, item 3.1, is our Council Code of Conduct bylaw. And I will turn that over to Ms. Shaw to provide everybody with an update on the changes that we made regarding that bylaw.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and good afternoon, council. For a bit of background, on September 27, council was notified of the intent to hold a special meeting on October 10 to consider first reading to a number of bylaws. Council was provided a listing of the bylaws the next day and administration provided draft copies of the administration reports and proposed bylaws the week of October 5. Council met for close to four and a half hours on October 10 to review and give first reading to the Council Code of Conduct, Burning, Canada Day Reserve, Solid Waste, and Procedure bylaws. Following the meeting on October 14, administration provided copies of the proposed bylaws as amended after the first reading, which was received on October 10. These bylaws are attached to the agenda today for second and third reading. The first bylaw that we will be looking at is the municipal council members' Code of Conduct, pardon me, Code of Conduct bylaw. The Municipal Amendment Act and Council Members' Code of Conduct Regulation come into effect concurrently on November 1, 2020. The Act requires all municipal councils to have a Code of Conduct in place by November 1, 2020. Council members will also be required to complete provincially developed online training on respectful conduct within six months of the legislation coming into effect. That would be a deadline of May 1, 2021, and within six months of being elected or reelected. The regulation defines the minimum standards and values that must be included in the Council Code of Conduct. It standardizes the complaints and appeals procedures for Code of Conduct violations and expands the list of sanctions available to councils to address the violations of the Code of Conduct. The purpose of this bylaw is to establish and regulate a Code of Conduct for members of council, and it must be reviewed annually. This bylaw follows the provincial template and meets the requirements prescribed in the Council Members' Code of Conduct Regulation. This bylaw received first reading with no amendments. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Shaw. I will go around the virtual council table here and see if there are any questions to Ms. Shaw, and I will start with Ward One, Counselor Link. Any questions on this bylaw?
I don't have any questions on the bylaw. It's fine as it is. However, as I said at the first reading, it's a minimal standard. So, and I would like to make a resolution, if I may. I'd like to say that whereas Municipal Relations has developed this sample Code of Conduct bylaw, which meets minimum requirements prescribed in the Council Members' Code of Conduct Regulation, and whereas the Association of Manitoba Municipalities recommends that council strengthen the sample bylaw to meet the specific needs of the municipality. And whereas council must complete mandatory provincial training on the Code of Conduct bylaw, be it resolved that council review bylaw 2020-10 as soon as possible following completion of mandatory training, in order to strengthen bylaw 2020-10 by incorporating appropriate sections of policy ADM 2018-02, Council Members' Code of Conduct, and best practices that may be identified as meeting our municipal needs.
Thank you, Counselor.
I'm wondering, Madam Mayor, if I can get a second here for this resolution? Is that appropriate at this time?
Council hasn't had an opportunity to see the resolution. Is that something that Counselor Link would want to bring forward to the next council meeting for review to council, to send to council to read it and have it in front of us?
Yes, that's fine. I can submit it.
Okay. Yeah, I think is council okay with that? I think a resolution to exceed minimum standards is a positive resolution, but it's hard for council without having an opportunity to read the resolution?
Understood.
Okay. Counselor Beshetti, go ahead. Any comments, questions, suggestions for changes to the bylaw?
No, not at this time. There was quite a bit of talk about this on the first meeting. So I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Clyber, any comments, questions on the Code of Conduct bylaw?
I think that any attempt to better the bylaw is a good thing. So if we want to take a look at that and see if that improves the bylaw, it's worth looking at.
Thank you. Counselor Parag, any comments, suggestions for the Code of Conduct bylaw?
I concur with what Counselor Clyber stated, and once we get that bylaw, that amendment from Counselor Link, we can go over it. I don't think that's a bad idea to strengthen it. The more we can strengthen it, it would be better for us. Thank you.
I agree. All right. I agree. So my comments would be in reviewing it. I think a lot of time has been spent working on this bylaw. The template was created by Municipal Relations in consultation with AMM and municipal leaders. Your mayor was included in on that consultation where they talked to myself and other leaders in the region about strengthening the Code of Conduct. So we've had considerable input. They've made every effort, and it's part of their resolution of trying to expect the highest standards of conduct from members of councils. And one of the areas that was really falling short was the investigation, and they've really outlined very clearly a process for mediation or bringing in an external investigator. So I'm very pleased with what they've presented. I support Counselor Link's suggestion to then exceed the minimum standards that they've provided. I hate to use the term minimum standard because they've spent about three years working on this. But we did have an excellent Code of Conduct in West St. Paul that a lot of time from our staff was spent on to make sure that we had a very good Code of Conduct, and there's some very well-defined terms in our code that are not clearly outlined in this. So I absolutely support that, and it sounds like in a summary that that is the will of council as well. So if it is the will of council, we will read the resolution for this, and Counselor Link can send her resolution to council by email, and we can address at the next meeting. Be it resolved that bylaw 2010, 2020-10, being a bylaw of the rural municipality of West St. Paul to establish and regulate Code of Conduct for members of council, be read a second time. Can I have a mover, please? Moved by Counselor Beshetti, seconded by Counselor Link. Any discussion? Hearing and seeing none, I will call for the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Thank you. All right, Ms. Shaw, we have the burning bylaw, and I will pass that over to you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The current burning bylaw was created for the prevention and control of fires within the municipality and was passed in 2015. The burning bylaw needs to be updated to include new zoning and was updated to remove redundancies and update formatting. This bylaw received first reading on October 10 with the following amendments, adding as described within the bylaw to the approved receptacle definition, and adding the type of fire, namely open air fires, fires in receptacles, fire pits, or outdoor fireplaces in subsections 7i, 8c, 9e, and 10f. Council had also tasked administration to return with a recommended language to add costs in the offense and penalty section, and we suggest adding plus any applicable cost to the first sentence in subsection 13-1. I will show that to you now on screen. So it'd be in this first sentence, pardon me, the second sentence, any conviction of an offense is subject to a penalty of $1,000 plus any applicable costs. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Shaw. I will go around the council table again and see if there are any questions for you or CAO, and I'll start with Counselor Beshetti. Any questions for Ms. Shaw?
I can't remember if this was asked, but this went through the fire chief to see if there was any more updates they would have wanted in there with zoning changes and stuff that we've done through the RM.
Yes, thank you. The fire chief, our planning and economic development officer, and our lawyer have vetted this bylaw. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Clyber, any questions for Ms. Shaw or the CAO?
Yeah, you mentioned applicable costs. What would that entail?
Go ahead, Ms. Shaw.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We would like to leave that broad in the bylaw so that we could apply that as needed in each situation. As you see in item 13-2, costs applied for the actual costs incurred are covered under 13-2. What the addition of plus any applicable costs would mean, costs related to recovering the $1,000 penalty. So if we have to go to small claims court or file for a collection, all the fees related to that $1,000 penalty would be the applicable costs. Thank you.
Okay, so the way that the bylaw is currently reading, it's to a penalty of 1,000. That doesn't mean you're going to penalize it 1,000. That is up to $1,000. So you can actually penalize $100. The way that your bylaw is reading is not saying that you're going to penalize somebody $1,000.
Ms. Shaw?
Is that what you're saying? Is subject to a penalty?
Of $1,000.
Okay, so each conviction then will be $1,000. Is that what you're saying?
Ms. Shaw?
Bylaw reads now, yes.
Okay. All right, I was just reading that wrong. And would some of the, you haven't given me an example of what would be an extra cost. Would there be an extra cost if the fire department had to go out there? Or if we had to, is that the kind of cost we're looking at?
No, that would be covered under section 13.2. The additional costs, as I said, would relate to filing a claim under small claims court or a collection agency. It would relate to charges in collecting the penalty fee.
Okay, so I'm just going to say that I think that $1,000 is very severe. And I don't think that all of our people in our community are going to be aware that if they have the wrong receptacle, they're going to be charged $1,000. So I think that is a very severe penalty. I think that if you said up to $1,000, that would be fair. You could convict on a smaller offense at the beginning to make them aware, and if it continues, then you could go to a higher offense. But to immediately slap a $1,000 fine on somebody, I think is severe and harsh. And that's my opinion. Sometimes people aren't aware bylaws have changed. Sometimes people aren't aware that they need a certain receptacle. We have new people coming in all the time. We have people that have been here a long time that have been doing things the same way over and over again. So unless we're going to really, really have a campaign out there, don't do this, I think to start at $1,000 is very severe.
Thank you, Counselor Clyber. Ms. Shaw, maybe I could ask you if you could speak a little bit about the minimum of 1,000 and through the municipal act and the legislative changes regarding bylaw enforcement. So the subject to $1,000 doesn't necessarily mean they're going to be charged, but if we charged a penalty, changes were made to the municipal act and the offenses act that would change our bylaws in terms of enforcement. Maybe you could speak to that a little?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes. The municipality certainly takes a softer approach to enforcement and tries to educate residents rather than jumping to enforcement of penalty. Certainly, if it is the will of council, the addition of up to $1,000 could be added to the bylaw, and council can provide direction on that. Counselor Clyber?
I think, I understand what our MLO is saying. But the way that it reads, if you wanted to read it as it stands, you could really go after somebody. I mean, that's just, that's the reality of it. The way it says is any conviction of an offense. So how do we, I know we've taken the softer approach where we warn people and we educate them and so forth, but if somebody wanted to take this as is, it could be taken as is, straight out of the bylaw. So how do we how do we approach it so that it isn't so literal and so black and white? Do you understand what I'm saying? We want to educate people. We want them to be aware of it. So how can we put it so that in writing that we're going to somehow do that? What can we say for the first offense, we'd be charged up to this? Or, you know, I'm just throwing it out there because I wasn't part of the initial talks on this, and if we're going to provide some leeway or tolerance, where are we going to put that?
So Ms. Shaw or the CAO, I guess I would refer back to you. Council doesn't get involved in enforcing this. So the process of enforcing, if there was an open fire, if the fire department was called, and we've had those situations in the past, and people haven't been fined, they've been warned, how does that process work? It's not coming to council. It would be up to the community services officer to speak with them, or the fire chief to speak with them, or the CAO to speak with them. Maybe you could speak a little bit about that process? It isn't a matter of people walking on and slapping someone with a $1,000 fine, right? How does this process work?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, how how enforcement would work in our office is we would be notified of a contravention. This usually comes by way of complaint, and we would send a designated officer, most likely our community services officer, to inspect the site. And at that point, there would be some discussion on what the bylaw requires and how they can be compliant with that. To my knowledge, I've been here nine years. We have never needed to find anyone under this bylaw. And of course, this bylaw was only put in place since 2015. Generally, people are happy to comply and be safe for themselves and their neighbors. But again, as I said, if council wishes to add that verbiage up to, in addition to the plus any applicable costs, I think that if council would like to support that, those would be positive changes.
Go ahead, Mr. CAO.
Yes, so we have this, it's fine in there. It's usually when we go to, for a visit for someone that's contravening the bylaw, they're usually very responsive and comply with what we are asking. But I have seen on two occasions in the ten years that I've been here where people in you to burn, I've seen fires that were very large. And I think that our department requires, and the RM requires, you know, kind of leverage when dealing with people that are stubborn and say, you know, I've had where they say we're having a fire and that's it, or they're burning their fields and that's it. So I believe it's good. I believe that the fire department would be reasonable here. And one of the things that could create a problem if we put an up to $1,000 fine, and we're having different values assigned. So who makes the decision that this fine is $100 and that fine is $900 or $1,000? That thing, but I mean, it's the will of council.
Thank you, Mr. CAO. Counselor Clyber, any follow-up questions or further questions?
Well, I sort of, what I'm sort of hearing is that if the fire department goes out there and warns the person, then they're not going to be convicted of the offense if they cease and desist. Is that what I'm hearing?
Hasn't happened yet. Nobody's
All right. Person then decides to thumb their nose up at us and says, I don't care what you say, I'm going to do it anyways. That's when we would institute the fine. Is that correct?
Has to be pretty bad.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. I just want
That would be in line with the fire chief would talk to myself. We'd have people involved here. I have to say that our fire department is really good job with education. Their education first, and I mean, it hasn't happened yet, and we have a reasonable fire department and community services crew.
Thank you, Mr. CAO.
Yeah, I think that what I'm concerned about, and I think you've addressed it well. What I'm concerned about is, in the future, when we're not on council or we're not here, will that be taken literally? And will the same spirit of the law and intention be used here? That's kind of what I'm getting at is, when we're all dead and gone, is somebody going to take this literally and come after somebody on the first offense? Or are they going to use that sort of latitude? That's kind of what I'm getting at here.
Great comments, and it has to be reasonable. And we live in a rural community, and people use their fire pits and get warnings, and so that's a valid concern. Absolutely. Counselor Parag, any comments, questions on this bylaw?
Yeah, I'm listening to Counselor Clyber there, and I'm looking at the bylaw there. And I was thinking of putting subject to a penalty, not exceeding $1,000. Not exceeding, so people knows it's not $1,000. It can be less, it can be more. It's not going to pass 1,000. Criminal code, that's how it, the terminology they use, not to exceed. So I don't know if that, right, that part in there, what people will know this is the maximum, and it can go from zero to 1,000. I don't know if you're getting what I'm saying.
Yes, and I think I'm just going to follow up with Ms. Shaw, because I believe the offenses act, we could only have a maximum of 1,000. I believe we couldn't charge any more than that. Ms. Shaw, maybe?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd have to, I'd have to look up that number. My recollection is the same, that the maximum is 1,000 for municipal offense.
That's what I'm saying, not exceeding 1,000. So you can go from zero to 1,000 maximum. So as Counselor Clyber said, some people, they've been here for a long time, they don't know. So that's where the discretion part comes in. You don't slap them with a $1,000 fine. Those not exceeding you, so you can run from one to 1,000. That's what I'm trying to say. So there is a leverage there.
So I guess because, so I've had two counselors mention about up to 1,000. So we can discuss that and see if we want to make, have Laney make that change to the bylaw. So the only concern there would be the discretion of the community services officer. So right now, the discretion is warnings or fines, but the discretion would be then a value if we say up to. So how does the community services officer determine if someone deserves? So how does the community services officer determine if someone deserves a $50 fine or if someone deserves a thousand dollar fine? As opposed to you've been warned and here's the fine. So how would, how would we ensure fairness on that? Counselor Parag, go ahead.
That's where simple common sense comes in, common sense. You lose your common sense when going and issuing these things. And common sense plays a very important part in anything we do. Lose your common sense. You're doing, going to go there and right off the bat, fly off the handle, as I may say. Warning, spoken to, there's documentation, this, this was done. You know, personal understand. So that's what I'm getting at.
Absolutely. And we've got good staff. They've been issuing warnings. So we haven't been, we haven't been guns blazing on these. Counselor Link, is this something that you support up to a thousand for making that change?
I do, but I don't quite agree with Counselor Parag. I think in order to protect the community services officer and even the fire department, that our process for instituting fines, warnings, fines, and then escalating on if there isn't compliance, needs to be spelled out in a policy. And we could ask administration to develop such a policy to go along with this bylaw. And then personal judgment gets removed. And our bylaw enforcement officer isn't criticized for saying imposing too big of a fine, too small of a fine. He's got a guideline to help him or her.
Counselor Clyburn, go ahead.
So I think that, I think that we all agree that we'd like to see it not as severe at the, for the first time offense. I think that's kind of what we're all agreeing to. The way the bylaw reads is where any offense continues for more than a day, a person is guilty of a separate offense for each day. So if I read the bylaw that, that way and we don't put the doesn't exceed a thousand, that person could be subject to a thousand dollar fine per day, the way that it currently reads. So that's very severe. And I know we have our people that are going to cause us problems. But should we maybe then rethink this and say first time offense is this much? After that, it can be a thousand dollars. I don't want to minimize the first time offense either because if somebody, if you say, oh, that, that's only 200 bucks if you have an open fire. Sure, I'll pay the 200 bucks, right? So then they continue on, right? I don't want that either because I wanted, I wanted to, to send a message, okay? Maybe we say, and that's why I'm saying, maybe we should go away and think about this again and say, well, maybe our first time offense after we've given a warning is $500, not to exceed a thousand. But if we have where any offense continues, that could go in like five, it could be $5,000 if they go for five days, the way that it currently reads. Am I, am I incorrect in that? Because if we don't, it doesn't exceed, you could be charged a thousand dollars a day according to this, right?
But what if, what if the first offense was very severe? So I understand what you're saying about just an open fire pit with your kids and the marshmallows and giving somebody a warning about you, you can't burn now. But what if the first offense was a fire that got out of control and burnt half the neighborhood? And that's the first offense? So how do we, and I'm, I'm wondering for the thousand dollars, like.
So, so let me ask you a question. If he burns a neighborhood down, you're only going to charge him a thousand dollars? That seems small compared to burning down an entire neighborhood.
For all costing.
I would like to see him get charged more than a thousand dollars.
Yes.
That's negligence, right?
But yes, I agree. The issue with having sale from zero to a thousand is, is that we can't add this to taxes. So if we tried to find somebody $50, it wouldn't be worth our, our community services officers' time to give it to them without for.
So that's why I'm saying it, it needs to be more, but maybe not escalate right up to a thousand. You know, like start at, say, the first offense, $500, the second one goes to a thousand. Do you know what I mean? So that it's a grad, at least there's some graduation there. Like if you're not, you're going to get charged a 500 bucks for sure the first time, but the second time, now it's going to a thousand and a thousand thereafter. That's, that's for the stubborn people that don't want to listen.
But would it reflect the, the first offense versus second offense? Or would it reflect the severity of the fire and what's happening?
I think it should be first offense, second offense severity. It should show that, you know, if you're not, if you're, if you're going to get charged the first offense and then you go and do it again, it goes right away, right up to the maximum. Because we already gave you a break. We already gave you a smaller fine to listen. And now you're not listening, so now we're going to escalate it. I don't know. That's my opinion. Let's see what Counselor Parag says because he is a policeman and he's had experience with this.
Okay. Counselor Parag and Counselor Bichetti.
What about if we use the terminology of the continuation of the offense? I mean, he's warned once and he continues to do it. That's where the fine will go up. The continuation. I don't know what you think of that, Counselor Clyburn.
Okay, Counselor Bichetti, you haven't had a chance to weigh in. I'm going to come to you. What are your thoughts?
It's tough because in one hand, you don't want to leave it to the person enforcing it to say up, the fine's up to. But I wouldn't want to see somebody with a little fire pit. You know, all of a sudden, it's not in, in the right standings or this or that compared to what I've seen previous, a farmer burning the stubble on his field. And all of a sudden, you know, it takes off because he's done it on a day with 70 mile an hour winds, but we've seen it happen. I just don't want to see the same kind of finding going on from the little one time in your backyard to the whole field going off. So the up to a thousand dollars, I, I think we have to leave some discretion to the person putting the fine out or the fire department, let them do the, you know, the, the, the choice of what the severity is. Let's face it, we don't do that. So it's, leave it to the people that are experienced with that. So that's just my opinion.
So what I'm hearing every member of council say is changing the word to offense is subject to a penalty of up to a thousand dollars. What I'm hearing everybody say. Can we leave it? Are we okay with adding that? I'm seeing nods. Good. Ms. Shaw, we can add that. And in terms of enforcement, either a question for you, Ms. Shaw, or a question for our C A O. If somebody was felt that they were overcharged on this and they were in their backyard and they didn't get a warning and they were issued a fine for a thousand dollars, could they come to council to appeal that? What would be the appeal process we currently have in place? Mr. C A O or Ms. Shaw?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Certainly, a resident would be able to appeal that fine to a higher body, be it council or further, if council would deny it.
Thank you. We definitely trust our staff. They're doing a great job. They're definitely not, they have an issue to find in nine years. So they're obviously out there giving warnings. But it's good to know that there are checks and balances in place and that if someone felt that they were wrongly given a fine for a thousand dollars, it should have been a warning that they could come in and appeal that. So offense is subject to a penalty up to a thousand dollars. Council is okay with that? And I have come to everyone. We got sidetracked. Everybody has had an opportunity to speak. Counselor Link, did I come back to you? Go ahead.
I've spoken about this, but I have another comment on this bylaw that I haven't had an opportunity to share.
Please, go ahead.
Okay. I think, reading over this one more time, I think we could clean it up a little bit more. It's to remove redundancies. I think we should add in the definition section, section two, a definition of a spark arrest, a rester. I didn't know what a spark arrester was, so I looked it up. And apparently it's a device like a mesh screen that prevents the emission of flammable debris from any source of combustion. So if we put a definition like that in the definition section and then go to section eight, can we go to section eight? There we go. Yeah, the rules regarding fires and receptacles. We could add a section stating all outdoor receptacles must have spark arresters with openings no larger than 10 millimeters or a half inch and constructed of non-combustible material used to cover the entire area of an opening, brackets S, brackets, or chimney. And then if we did that, we could delete section nine, C two, if we can pull down to that. Get rid of that. Nine, C two on the next page. There we go. We could get rid of that. And 10 E. We could get rid of 10 E.
I think we're, we might still be okay to have the repeat, even if it's repeated through the, through the bylaw, might still be okay.
Well, if we were getting rid of redundancies, I thought that was what we were doing. And anyway, may I just finish? And then the 11, delete all words after 50 gallons. That would shorten it up a little bit, maybe. Those just suggestions. Then in 15, section 15. Oops. No, no, I'm sorry, eight, H B one. I apologize, H B one. Now, to me, this, I think that a minimum space between the edge of a fire receptacle and any combustible buildings, fences, trees and wires. I think that minimum is too high. And the reason I think that minimum is too high is we do have now a regulation that you have to have a spark arrester on any, on any open fire. And also, we're dealing in some cases with lots that are 44 foot wide. You've got a, if you have a three foot wide fire pit and you need six and a half feet on either side, you're taking up, you know, all of the width of the lot except for 10 feet. So I think 10 feet would make more sense than than 15 feet. I think that is excessive. What do other people think?
So Counselor Link, I'm just going to go to the C A O and just to comment on those thoughts because bylaw was approved by the fire chief. And so just, I'm just going to go to the C A O for comment.
Hello, counsel. Yeah, I, I, I think that's a really good idea by Counselor Link about the spark arrestor to put a definition in. I'm really receptive to that idea. I would be careful with changing distances that they, that we went to the fire chief need submitted. So we would be, you know, in fact, here having a council overruling the fire chief on some of the safety precautions that he's put in.
Okay, I wasn't aware of what sections and what precautions the fire chief actually put in. So you've given me that information that that's one area where he commented.
Okay. Yes, the fire chief has vetted this, this bylaw. He's, he's worked with, with our planner and Laney on this. So I would, I would, like I say, bar caresser, fabulous, instances, et cetera. Let's, let's go with what our chief decided.
Thank you, Mr. C A O. And just to go around, I, I think it's a good idea. Is everybody okay with adding the definition of the spark arrestors? Is that the terminology to the definitions? I'm seeing nods. I think that's a great idea as well, adding that definition. I, I like it in every section, Counselor Link. I know you're wanting to remove redundancies. But if people are just skimming through the bylaw, looking for their own area about, I just want to know about open air fires or I just want to know the fire pit section, I think it's good to have that redundancy in there. But I really, I think that's a great suggestion to clearly define it.
No problem with leaving the other parts in.
Counselor Clyburn, go ahead.
Do we have a definition for the outdoor? And I'm asking for my own, my own thing here, for outdoor warming receptacle? Like, is that a fire table? Like, I have a fire table on my balcony. Is that considered an outdoor warming fire receptacle?
Yes, Counselor Clyburn, that's how I understood it from the fire chief.
Well, that's just a standard like fire table that you see in the store, basically. Like a Costco fire table with a propane tank underneath. Is that correct?
That's how I understood it.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Link, go ahead.
Well, a warming device could also be a barrel that might be set up near a skating rink or at an outdoor winter festival or something where people can go and stand around and warm their hands and so on and so forth. So I think Counselor Clyburn's got a point there that maybe that should be also defined. Because it can mean a variety of things. And I don't know, do we allow burning barrels? I don't know. Did the fire chief say anything about allowing burning barrels? I know people use them.
We haven't seen any burning barrels around the Sanova Center lately. You know, I, I, I don't necessarily think you have to define, you know, with burning barrels and that. I think that Counselor Parag had said earlier, let's go with the common sense rule. You know, in a case of a burning barrel to warm up people around the, this Sanova Center or in people's yards. I think that that would be fire department. It's common sense.
So a burning barrel near a skating rink in a private yard is okay?
Well, I'm, I'm going to refer to section nine, requirements for fire pits. Nine A, unapproved fire pit must be enclosed on all sides and constructed of masonry, concrete, heavy gauge metal or other non-combustible materials acceptable to the office, to A H G or the chief. So it, it doesn't say exactly what this will look like, but it has to be heavy material. It's got to be enclosed on all sides for the fire pit and it has to be acceptable to the chief. So if it, if it was something that was acceptable. And then on the requirements for outdoor fireplace, what Counselor Clyburn was talking about might constitute an outdoor fireplace when it's, you know, in, you know, same thing, must be constructed of masonry, concrete, heavy gauge metal or mesh or other non-combustible materials acceptable to the A H J or the chief. Slides and opening. So it tries to get into receptacles for outdoor warming, metal in good repair, maximum capacity, 50 gallons with all openings entirely covered by removable, non-combustible spark arrestors, grills, mesh. So it tries to get pretty specific without, without naming specifically burning barrel. But it gets pretty specific about the type of material and, and ultimately it comes down to approval of the fire chief, right? So if somebody makes a phone call and the fire chief shows up, ultimately, is he, is it safe? Is it acceptable for him? And we, we want the, we want the liability with the, with the fire chief here on his knowledge and his expertise. I'm reluctant to start overriding what, what, what he has put into the bylaw and the, and some of the technical terminology. What, what, what he has put into the bylaw and the, and some of the technical terminology.
Well, that's okay, that's all I was clarified was whether or not we needed a. Definition when Counselor Cliber talked about warming. Receptacles. Outdoor warming fire receptacles. That's all, that's fine.
I've gone around to everybody, are there any other questions? All right, so we have a couple of the changes. Ms. Shaw, can we give it second reading and then wait on the third reading based on the changes?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So as you can see, I've added a definition for spark arrestor. I've defined it at saying it refers to the grill or mesh fire receptacle covering with openings no larger than 12 millimeters, half an inch. And constructed of a non combustible material. And the second edition would be. Two, pardon me, I just referred back to my notes, under 13, one. The addition of up to $1,000 penalty and the addition of plus any applicable costs.
Counsel Link, are you all right with the definition? Is that what you were looking for?
Yeah, could we go back to the definition of spark arrestor, sorry?
Yeah.
There you should be, Counsel Link?
I'm just looking. Such as the emission. Okay, and construction, okay, you couldn't add something like needed to prevent the emission of flammable debris. From any source of combustion.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Yeah. Flammable, of any flammable debris from any source of combustion. The reason I'm fussy on this is because there, people will understand. Is to prevent those embers from starting another fire elsewhere, hey? So. It's just to help understand, that's all. Thank you.
Everyone acceptable with the definition inclusion? Counsel Parag, yes, Counsel Bushetti, Counsel Cliber, good. Any other comments, questions? All right, then I will read the resolution. Be it resolved that the bylaw 2020-11 being a bylaw of the Royal Municipality of West St. Paul for the prevention and the control of fires within the municipality. And repeal by law number 2015-16 be read a second time. Can I get a mover, please? Moved by Counselor Parag, seconded. Counselor Cliber, and can I request a recorded vote, Ms. Shaw? Any other discussion? Counsel Link?
Should we not have said of the bylaw as amended?
Thank you, Ms. Shaw, right, as amended?
As amended, and those have been noted, thank you.
Thanks. Any other comments for discussion, hearing and seeing none, I'll call for the question, all those in favor? Opposed? And that is carried. And maybe Mr. C A O between now and the third reading, we could just have the fire chief look at our revisions and make sure he's okay with that. Thank you. All right, we have our Canada Day Reserve bylaw now, I will turn it back over to you, Ms. Shaw.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The purpose of this bylaw is to create a Canada Day Reserve. That is funded annually in the financial plan. The municipality may by resolution also deposit additional funds into the reserve fund as you deem necessary and desirable to do so. Currently, the West St. Paul Canada Day event is funded by an annual allocation from council and the financial plan. As well as fundraising efforts of the fire department and Canada Day Committee, as well as grants received. As we know, the Canada Day event in 2020 was canceled due to the COVID-19 pandemic. This year, council budgeted $36,000 to contribute to the Canada Day events. Fundraising efforts were suspended in the spring, however, there were $10,176 raised for Canada Day at that point. The municipality wishes to create a Canada Day Reserve Fund and transfer these unspent Canada Day allocation of the 36,000 as well as the fundraising totals of 10,176. From the 2020 operating budget to the reserve. This bylaw received first reading with the following amendments. In the preamble, we added clause 168, two and 168, two A. As well in clause two, we replaced in part with the wording in addition to fundraising and grant revenue. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shaw. I will go around the table and see if there's any questions for you or the C A O. Counsel Parag. Any questions?
No questions, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Link, any questions?
No questions.
Thank you. Counselor Cliber, any questions?
So is the purpose of this reserve fund, because we haven't had a reserve fund before. What was the reason to now create the reserve fund? Was it just to take these allocated funds that? From our budget and put it into a sort of a slush fund? Is that what I'm getting? And would this fund then be part of our? Tax base as far as would it now be? Part of what we, we do, what we calculate for our taxes? I think it was before anyways, right? It would, it would be part of that anyways, or is it part of the mill rate now? If we create this reserve fund?
Yeah.
Yes, in, in the report from Laney Shaw to counsel, the purpose of this bylaw is to create a Canada Day Reserve Fund. That is funded annually in the financial plan. So, so what we're doing here is we're, we're making sure that it's funded on an annual basis. This would come out of your operating budget, out of your tax operating budget. And I think, I think what it also does, it allows the, the Canada Day fund to be planned in advance. It allows the, the fire department who are the leading the charge here to, to have confidence in the R M. Being behind them on this, on the candidate project. Canada Day has become significant in our, our R M. It's, it's something that people identify the R M of West St. Paul with. There's been cost changing through the years, it's. But it's gotten bigger, it's something we're very proud of. What's, what's, what's also happened is the fundraising has been quite trying on, on, on the members of the fire department, so. Not only are they going out and, and working all weekend. Actually, work starts for, for Canada Day months in advance, but. They're there 12 hours a day, a number of them, starting on Thursday, setting up when you go home on. After Canada Day. I won't say Thursday, I'll say two days before they're setting up on Canada Day, they are there for, for 20 hours. And then the day after, they're helping dismantle Canada Day. So they're spending a lot of effort on Canada Day and it's getting harder to fundraise. I believe with COVID-19, it's going to be even harder to fundraise, or we're going to be going to small business who have. Impacted by COVID and, you know, I don't want to be the one that knocks on their door. And, and ask them for a donation at this point, and quite frankly, it's. Hope for the fire department to fit this into their, to their whole schedule and strategy on Canada Day. So those are, are the reasons for the reserve fund, something consistent, and it maintains it from year to year, so. An annual fund that can be counted on and council can, can look at this and, and know what's going to happen year from year. And, and have consistency too, as well as the fire department.
It really takes it off the table for us discussing it every year because it's a discussion every year, right? So it's, it's now become a given. That the council now and the council going forward is committed to this. And, and so the, the value might change as their costs increase, but it really takes it off the table as a capital kind of an item that we're discussing, and it just becomes part of operating.
Also add, I'm also going to add that. As the fire department comes in front of us for Canada Day, it, it blends into their fire department ass, so. You're, you're, you're having the fire chief coming in front of you, asking, you know, for, for, for their budget operating and capital. We're in the fire department. And then on the other hand, he has to come in and ask you every year for, for orders for the, the Canada Day. And sometimes those lines are crossed with, with council goes, well, you know, we, we just. Give the fire department some funding on something, and now they're asking for more, so. Kind of keep it separate, which it should be.
Does that answer your question, Counsel Cliber? Thank you, Counsel Link?
At the first read, we had quite a discussion about. Would this appear as a, a extra small mill rate under controllable purposes? And the answer that I recall was that yes. It would be added. A, a small mill rate added. Enough of a mill rate to raise what should go in. In the fund each year. So yeah, I don't recall hearing Mr. C A O address that. Right today, but I do recall him addressing it on the first reading. Am I correct, Mr. C A O?
Yes, you're correct, Counsel Link, thank you.
Thank you.
And Counselor Bushetti, any comments on this?
No, it's something we know we're going to do every year. This year, it looked, summer never happened, just because this didn't happen, so I'm, I'm with it the way it's stating it right there. Thank you.
All right, if there are no other comments or questions, I will read the resolution. Be it resolved that bylaw 2020-12 being a bylaw of the Royal Municipality of West St. Paul for the purpose of creating a Canada Day Reserve Fund be read a second time. Can I have a mover, please? Moved by Counsel Parag, seconded by Counsel Bushetti. Can I also get a recorded vote on this, Ms. Shaw, as well? Any further discussion on this? Hearing and seeing none, I will call for the question, all those in favor? Opposed? And that is carried, thank you. All right, our next bylaw is our procedural bylaw, and I will pass it back to you, Ms. Shaw. And actually, just before we get started, Ms. Shaw, I have an addition to add. For that, there's been some discussion, and so I'll just bring that up, and it can be part of the discussion as we go forward with the changes. One of the additions I'm wanting to make under the section that we talked about. Agenda items going to the mayor rather than the C A O and the C A O being able to bump that to a next meeting. I'd like to add the following comments for discussion of council. Mayor must provide a reason in writing if any agenda request is not supported. So I'll just read that again. Mayor must provide a reason in writing if an agenda request is not supported. And we can include that for discussion, and I'll let you go ahead and present our, our changes on the procedural bylaw, Ms. Shaw.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The current procedures bylaw received through reading on January 10, 2019. The bylaw was created to regulate the proceedings and conduct of council and committees. The municipal act requires council to establish their rules of procedure by bylaw and review the bylaw at least once during its term of office. The procedures bylaw should be updated to include administrative changes and suggestions resulting from the review of the procedures bylaw by our municipal lawyer, Maria Grande. The bylaw was also updated to remove redundancies and update formatting. I will also note that the removal of subsection 13, two, which is the requirement to list the reason given for abstaining from a resolution. Does not remove the ability for a council member to abstain from a vote. The proposed change makes the bylaw consistent with the municipal act, which requires a reason be given for abstention only for the third reading of the bylaw. This bylaw received first reading on October 10 with the following amendments. In subsection 7.5, under item 18, which is question period. We added held on the fourth Tuesday of each month and, and based on current agenda items. In subsection 8.4, we replaced regular and held on the next day, which is following, not a holiday, at the same time and place. With the wording rescheduled, subject to the provisions of this bylaw. In the committee of the whole agenda, we deleted addendums to the agenda and added and based on current agenda items to the question period. We also deleted or provide from section 11. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Shaw. Mr. C A O, you were wanting to comment as well?
Hello, counsel. I just wanted to comment on, on a couple of the changes. One was in regard to the agenda request. So, this is the question to counsel. What is the difference if the agenda request is through the C A O or the mayor? The, the, the issue in fact is denial of the request, so I, I don't believe that. Issue is if it's through the C A O or the mayor, we have a order that we've all agreed to that. Counsel should be dealing through the, through the mayor. And, and that administration deals through the C A O. We've had some requests for agenda items to be added. And I've looked at this and, and talked to our attorney, Maria Grande, and. When we had these previous requests, we have to understand that staff needs the opportunity to solve the problem. When an issue comes from a resident, we cannot submit it, just submit it as an agenda item. And in, in the case of, we have a request for service item. Submitted as an agenda request, we have to give staff the opportunity of that problem. So in that case, we have a request for service process and we were working on the problem. And so staff needs to be able to have the opportunity. Of them, and the request, in the case of the request for the development agreement. We have a policy for a development agreement. Development agreement is pleased when the development comes out of land titles. And, and we know, we, we've got this policy, the policy works. And in the past, the old budgetman has been fine with our policy for development agreements. This change for, for. For this section is, is an improvement of governance. And in this case, the mayor has already suggested that. The mayor would have to provide a reason, if a reason is provided, it addresses the concerns. There is no list of reasons, and that was, we had a, a request from, in, in the first reading. That we provided a list of reasons, so I went back to the attorney. Maria Grande, and she said there is no list of reasons. When the mayor gives a reason, that would be a reason. Items need to be added in an orderly manner. It needs to be cost effective and expedited in an expedited manner. And to residents, want issues addressed. They, they'll probably be addressed faster and in a better manner through our, our policies or requests for a service. Versus waiting for counsel. We also have to be careful, we can have. Every time that there is a situation out in the community that. A resident or taxpayer of our community has a problem, they can't just come to council and be put on. As an agenda request, or, or we'll, we'll end up with. Different numbers of requests and, and we've, we've got a request for service system that's working really well. So I, I believe that following our charter, that going through the, the mayor, also going through. Leadership through the mayor. To, to put something on the agenda is the right way to do it. It's it from being an administrative item. The council can, if three counselors agree that if the mayor. Provides a reason and three counselors still insist that an agenda item be put on, then, then that's a, another. Way it could be an agenda item that the majority of, also which is, is what the democracy is based on, if a majority agree that a item goes on. If a majority agree that a item goes on, then it should go on. And like I said, our lawyer said that, you know, if a reason is provided by the mayor, then it would, it would, I believe, we provide a superior service where requests for system, a request for service system. And in fact, if we just have all these requests for items to go on the agenda, if a citizen is not satisfied, it's going to create an atmosphere of anarchy. Policies that we're following have been established and following, we've been following them for years. Asking the Cao to add complaints is adverse to the municipality. And in the case of, again, talking to our attorney, our attorney, council should not be putting the RM in a situation of risk. What happens if we're not following our policies or proper process to address concerns, then we could be at risk. Want to talk a little bit, Madam Mayor, about the abstaining changes? So in regards to abstaining, we have found that within this policy that we're not saying that council can't abstain. We're simply saying that it won't be recorded, will be live streamed. So anyone that's watching, watching the council meeting will be able to hear the council counselor or mayor saying, so you'll still have the right to do that. So nothing is being taken away from you. Abstaining and recording, I have to ask council, what value does that add? It has promoted comments that may be unfacial or data that's maybe not accurate, and it could be slanderous. It promotes dialogue from the outside, from staff, from council. So for when you abstain, you're creating dialogue, and in fact, could be creating conflict. All these groups, so the staff, the people outside of council and council all feel compelled to respond when there's someone abstains. So it's not in the best interest of the RM. But I will still say that as a counselor or the mayor, you still have the right to abstain. Nobody is taking that right away from you. You can abstain, and you are going to be doing it. We're live streaming now. So the fact is, if you wanted to abstain tonight, everybody could, would be hearing that. So you're not being silenced in any ways. We are just saying that the Cao will not be recording that any further.
Sorry, Mr. Cao. Just, Mr., I just want to make sure, did we lose Counselor Clyber? Sorry, just, I wanted her to hear this, so.
Not sure if we lost. Counselor Clyber, are you still able to hear the meeting?
Oh, I'm able to hear it loud and clear. Just got some internet issues again, so my, I have to shut my camera off temporarily.
No problem.
Thank you for your concern, Counselor Bichetti.
All right. Are you finished, Mr. Cao? Are you?
Yes.
So we have a written recommendation from Ms. Shaw, and we have a verbal recommendation and report from our Cao. I will go around the council table, and I'm sure we have lots to discuss on this one. Counselor Link, go ahead.
Yes, I am against 7.3 altogether. First reason, the charter that was developed by Sue Kaler. Unfortunately, when that charter was developed, it didn't occur to any of us, including Ms. Kaler, who I understood was very versed on municipalities and municipality regulations and policies and so on and so forth. The charter saying that all requests need to go through the mayor and then to the Cao conflicted, and we did not recognize it, none of us, conflicted with our procedures, procedural bylaw at the time. That's number one. Number two, if three members of council submit to the mayor in writing, that's a quorum. That's a meeting of council, really, when you get down to it. That's a, and it's not being held in the public eye. A decision is being made, and it is not being held openly. It's not being done openly. Therefore, I don't think it's even legal. And I think that we need to be consulting, perhaps consulting municipal relations about the legality of 7.3. I think 7.1 was very straightforward. If we need some criteria so that we may judge for ourselves as counselors, if we're submitting something that is inappropriate, we should be able to look at that criteria and make a judgment. Am I submitting this? Is it appropriate or not? To avoid a difficulty, to avoid any problems. So I'm very much against this. As far as abstaining is concerned, you have a point about live streaming. However, not everybody is going to partake in the or can partake in the live streaming. Some people are without computers. Therefore, and I also want to ask though, how many abstentions have ever resulted from law problems have ever resulted from a counselor making an abstention? And if it was, if it was a huge problem in, say, the past council that came before us, why wasn't this change made back then?
We haven't had any legal issues yet, but I've found that the reasons for abstaining have evolved and have begun to change and have statements made aren't necessarily about procedure now, but becoming I'm a bit specific on things that could be challenged by the administration or by the general public or other members of council. So we're getting some statements that aren't necessarily, in my opinion, factual. So we're having a counselor that, putting a statement on there that would be unfair to administration, you know, when we have professional accountants on staff, you know, just staff as a whole, and then puts the staff in a position where they respond to the abstain. And, you know, it could create, and this was talking to the attorney, this would create risk for the RM. So what you're potentially doing is putting the RM at a financial risk or an abstained statement.
I don't get it. How is this different from all the other abstentions that were made in the past by the past council?
Well, I think if you put some of these extensions side by side, that, you know, we could see the difference in them. I think that, you know, I've seen for sure one this year that it has been challenged by the administration. So that puts, that puts us in a serious position. We've never found that before. Where the counselor abstaining or mayor, I'm in a position where it left it open for interpretation, in my opinion, and I think that's been the difference.
Perhaps that indicates that the situation was not adequately discussed. Anyway, I'm against 7.3. I think 7.1 is the correct way to go. And I am very concerned, the three members of council sharing their opinion, that's a quorum, that's a meeting, it's not a decision made in the public's eye. And it isn't, and it doesn't qualify, I don't think, for any of the reasons for an in-camera decision. It's an illegal decision being made.
So 7.1, where the Cao makes the decision on his own versus 7.3, where council decides what goes on council's agenda?
The Cao accepts things that are, that council asks for. I'm saying we could also have these criteria for what isn't appropriate and what is appropriate. Then we would all know. Simply goes to the Cao, boom, it's on the agenda, no problem. If there is a problem.
I just want to point out to Counselor Link that, that I talked to our lawyer on this and that our lawyer is in agreement with which.
So the lawyer thinks that three members of council and the mayor agreeing over the phone or in an email is a legal thing to do. Because all meetings, and that's a meeting when you go to quorum, and you're making a decision, then that's a meeting.
Yeah, I just want to back up because it seems that we're moving around a bit here. So, so what I heard is, what I heard at one point is you talk about a list of criteria, why, why the Cao in this case would, would or wouldn't put anything on or the mayor has suggested in this, in this new process. So what the lawyer has said is you wouldn't list a number of reasons or criteria of what or wouldn't be on the agenda. You would have a written reason provided by the mayor. So that would address the concerns of the criteria. He was very crystal clear in saying that we shouldn't be doing a list of reasons the mayor could supply a reason. And then if council can agree with that, council could still move forward and have the item put on the agenda. I believe that in the spirit of leadership and looking at the code of conduct today, that the elected official group working together, in my opinion, the council should work with the mayor to move agenda items forward.
Did you discuss the legality of having a quorum, make the decision along with the mayor?
What the comment from the municipal lawyer was, was that it's appropriate wording, and it has a watchdog provision in it. And so we specifically addressed the three counselors being able to say, two members of council to say, no, this has to go on an agenda. So the person submitting it says, this is what I'd like on the agenda. The mayor provides a written reason, which is a watchdog provision, to say, you can't have this on the agenda because our policy on requests for service, this is being dealt with. Two members of council, two additional members can email the mayor and say, no, we want that on council. So we want that on the agenda. And the terminology, word for word, that the, our municipal lawyer said was, this is appropriate wording and has a watchdog provision.
You're talking about three members of council, that's a quorum, plus the mayor. Sorry, I really think this should be discussed by municipal relations.
It's been discussed by our lawyer, but point taken. Yep, point taken. Thank you for your comments. Counselor Clyber?
I believe I'm Ward 3. It's Counselor Bichetti's turn.
Mayor, you're on mute. Sorry, we couldn't hear what you said.
Thank you. Everybody will get a fair turn. Go ahead, Counselor Clyber. It's your turn.
Is this so Counselor Bichetti and Counselor Parag have last word, or we've been going by ward up until now? So Counselor Bichetti's next.
This is because of how I see you on the screen and as my role as chair, that I'm giving you the opportunity to speak. Are you wanting to speak at this time?
Oh, I'm wanting to speak, Mayor Christian.
All right.
That the way that order that you're doing it is now suddenly unfair, but I'll speak. So the CEO just spoke of code of conduct. Well, 6.2 says, any behavior that affects the council member's ability to perform their duties effectively. The way that 7.3 is now being presented to us affects my ability as a counselor to do my duty for my ward. You haven't defined inappropriate. You haven't defined what's considered an agenda item. Code of Conduct, 7.6, respect. Seek to include rather than exclude. You're excluding. Number C, 7.6, treat every person with courtesy, dignity, dignity and fairness. This is not fair by any stretch of the imagination. The way that you've ordered it is any agenda item the mayor doesn't like will not be considered. And the request is not granted unless I can get three people to agree with me or two other people to agree with me. The way that our voting and the voting of this bylaw has gone so far is yourself, Counselor Parag and Counselor Bichetti have all voted together. So you're, of course, in favor of this. I'm not in favor of it. And neither is Counselor Link. And that's because we're not going to get anything on the agenda. I've already been refused two items on the agenda. I've been told it's an RFS. That is not under our procedural bylaw, any definition there, that that's considered inappropriate. This is just plain censorship. And in my opinion, it's bullying. You're getting rid of my right to put something on the agenda. You're preventing myself and Eleanor or Link. That's 50% of our population are not going to get represented properly, and we're not going to know why we're turned away either, because you haven't defined it. So in my opinion, you're getting rid of my right to put something on the agenda. You're censoring me and you're silencing me. And because I was the person that asked for two agenda items to be put on, and they were both refused, you turned around and you put this into the procedural bylaw, updated the bylaw, put in very vague terms so that you can refuse my requests. And to me, that's absolutely inappropriate to use your words and censorship. Next, abstention. Mayor Christian, you abstained 42 times as a counselor. Let me read one of your abstentions. I would like to request an internal review and report to council be made outlining how decisions were made contrary to proper process or breakdown of costs for this project, how the funding was front-ended, as well as how administration will prepare for future waste LIDs to ensure a fair, open and transparent process. One page long. It was okay for you to abstain. It was okay for you to criticize the Cao. It was okay for you to criticize the administration. But now when we're in council, it's not okay for us to criticize or to say anything about proper process. The only thing I've ever abstained from is the subdivision for River Springs. And the reason I abstained from that was because I asked for it to be tabled until after the appeal hearing was done. And that would have been, in my opinion, proper process, but you pushed it through. And it was a conditional approval, which I felt was biased. And I stated that in my abstention. And I don't think that's going to cause a lawsuit. And our right as counselors is to abstain and to prevent censorship. And this is what's happening right now, is you're trying to silence us. And it's basically anything you don't like. And it's basically anything you don't like. That's what this says. Anything you don't like. Because you haven't found definitions for anything you don't like. It's just whatever you don't like. And that is not proper process. That is not proper democracy. Under the municipal act, when a council acts in excess of its jurisdiction, of its jurisdiction, that bylaw can be declared invalid. When a council is acting in bad faith or the bylaw is discriminatory, it can be invalidated. And I think that this seven point three is absolutely discriminatory towards certain members of council.
Thank you, Counselor Clybert. Counselor Bichetti.
I'm not going to start this off with bashing, so I'm just going to go right into it. Seven point three, you, you need a quorum to bring it to the table anyway. So why not start the meeting off with the quorum? Counselor Link, I understand you don't agree with it. But a general conversation with your fellow colleagues outside of a council chamber? Have you never discussed anything with any of your other council members? Outside of a meeting, it's not a meeting. It's one person that works together, working with another one. Where I'm not understanding something, I'll phone Counselor Parag. How does this work? So to have a quorum, as you say it, I, I don't think it's a meeting. But you need a quorum to get it onto the table. So wouldn't it be easier to have people that are having the same issues or concerns bringing it to the table that way? That's, I, I'm, I'm good with three because you need that to bring it to the table anyway. And then it's not, you know, showboating when it gets to the table that it's two people or three or four, however the vote goes. So I think bringing it to the table with three is a good idea. Another section that I'm looking at under regular and planning meetings, section eight, eight point six, adding that all members of council will be provided a notice by electronic format at the earliest convenience. That's if a meeting gets canceled by the mayor, just so that we are aware why it is being canceled. And this way we can get it electronically rather than getting it on a paper copy. Sorry, I'm just flipping through the bylaw. Changes here and there. And that's it. So a lot of, some of the other ones were brought up. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Bichetti. Counselor Parag, go ahead.
But this thing about addendums, adding addendums, I don't see a problem with adding it, but administration have to be prepared for these things. And if something have to come up on an addendum, we put it forth to the next available meeting if something is there. Because to put an addendum on administration or nobody's prepared for it to answer that, then it's no good. So if you put it, okay, addendum is added, then we put it forth to the next upcoming meeting so they can get prepared for the, for the addendum. What's being questioned? Or what, I'm sorry, not being questioned. What's being asked? So nobody feels left out. Okay, my matter was not addressed. We're giving you time. Okay, the next meeting that's coming up, we'll add it to the addendum. That's all I, I want to see something like that.
Why is it that no other council in, in any of the surrounding R M's in the Winnipeg Metro Region, seven point three on their procedural bylaw? You tell me that. Why is it that one counselor can't bring up a concern? You know what? We're supposed to be debating and discussing. And if there is something sensitive, it can go in camera and nobody is understanding that?
Everybody's had an opportunity to discuss and to share their concerns. I, I understand there's been concerns raised on this. Everybody's been able to share their opinion and the concerns raised. I will comment on, on some of my concerns and opinions as well. The change from C A O to mayor was made to ensure that we follow proper process and that we're looking after the interests of the municipality as a whole. So some of the requests that have come forward, all requests to the C A O have been approved, other than three. And those requests were related to conflicts of interest request, a request for service complaints issue and a development.
I never requested a conflict.
Sorry, everybody's had an opportunity, Counselor.
But then be accurate, then be accurate, because I never requested that.
Everybody's had an opportunity. Quorum, right? Thinking about the protest one at a time. So there were requests made to be added to agendas. And the C A O sought legal opinion on that. Council was informed of that, the counselor, and all of council was made aware of that. The change is to not only reflect the council code that we have with Sue Kaffler, where requests from the mayor, from council go through the C A O, which we agreed was a proper process. The mayor is to show leadership, is head of council as per the municipal act. Really, what is the difference when a request goes to the mayor or to the C A O? A request is being made to add an item to the agenda. I'm wanting to see all items, items added to the agenda that help our residents and move issues forward. Items cannot be added that do not follow proper process. So was there a question to our municipal lawyer about criteria and listing that out? Yes. The response was it can't be done. It would be like telling a judge, here's the criteria that you make for how the decisions that you make. So, you know, the, the addition of the mayor providing a letter to council explaining why an item would not be accepted could then be challenged by the counselor that it is at least in writing. When there's teamwork and collaboration among council, if that is something that a counselor feels that they have been wronged, that their request was appropriate for an agenda, they can reach out to their council members and send three emails, two more emails from counselors to say, hey, we believe that is an agenda item. Please add that item there. So it's really about democracy and teamwork and following proper process. For some matters, they are not agenda items. So we want to be respecting staff. You know, we've had complaints. We get how many complaints, over two hundred complaints a year from residents that staff does an amazing job resolving. We see those stats and I believe eighty to ninety percent of all complaints within the municipality are resolved. We're not using agendas to circumvent that proper process. That R F S process was approved by council. Our development agreement process was approved by a previous council. That is our level of governance at that level. So it's unfair to bring complaints to mayor and council when we have a process in place and a policy and we're not allowing staff to follow through with that. Counselors can be informed and updated. So there's been requests about comments about the bus facility related to legal action, related to development agreements, development agreements for River Springs, requests for development copy. There have been requests to have specific complaints put on the agenda. All of those issues can be resolved by email. Nobody is not having the information. If staff is mandated to deal with complaints, we shouldn't be circumventing that and using agendas to embarrass staff, to blindside them or to request that some residents be treated differently. We couldn't possibly have two hundred complaint items added to an agenda. They're not agenda items. Our role is governance and policy. And having those things brought to our table is not fair to our staff and it's not doing our job. How are we adding value to the municipality and fulfilling our role if we're putting items on agendas that aren't meant to be? So, you know, all requests in the last two years, every request that has come to the C A O for an agenda, minus three for very specific reasons that our lawyer has been consulted on, have made it onto the agendas. We want to be addressing issues in an open way. Bringing that forward, blindsiding staff in that way is not open, it is not transparent, and it is not good code of conduct. Our municipal lawyer has reviewed the changes, as I mentioned earlier. She is fine with these changes, says that it is appropriate wording and a watchdog mechanism has been put in place. And so comments have been made regarding what, there's nobody else that involves mayor and decision-making. That is not true. The, in Springfield, the mayor and C A O in the procedural bylaw, mayor and C A O review and approve the agenda. The city of Brandon, the mayor is involved in a committee where they determine what goes on agendas. For a number of other municipalities in the capital region, one, two, three, four, the process of how you get information onto the agenda is not as explicit. But many of them go through the C A O. So there's, you know, there's a reason why we're bringing this forward now. I'm sure that it, I understand the concerns that were raised. There are two mechanisms in place for watchdog provision. Both the two council members submitting in writing and the mayor providing a reason in writing. If, if the mayor, if counselors think the mayor's reason is not appropriate, they're able to submit emails and the request can be on. And there's also the third mechanism in place when it's the beginning of a council meeting, that counselor can still ask that item be added to an addendum and they needed to, need to be supported by their fellow counselors. So again, if it's a legitimate item to be addressed at a meeting, there's no reason why fellow counselors or the mayor would refuse it. On the issue of abstentions, we, we're making that change to follow legislation. Any member of council can continue to still abstain on any resolution for any reason. They can state that reason. But the municipal act does not provide provision other than a third reading of a bylaw to list the reason into the minutes. So that is us following legislation on that. We have reviewed that with our municipal lawyer. Of the eighteen municipalities in the capital region, twelve municipalities follow the municipal act and do not allow abstentions, reasons given, except for the third reading as per the municipal act. So twelve municipalities out of the eighteen, one does not allow abstentions at all. And five municipalities, including ours, allow abstentions to be noted. So twelve do not. I just also found it interesting that in the Manitoba Municipal Relations Procedures Manual, they list only that third reading be given. So theirs is the same as all of the other twelve municipalities, that the C A O must record the reason of abstention for a third reading of a bylaw and just the name of the counselor identified for all other resolutions not listed. So that's out of Municipal Relations Procedures Manual. In Ontario, abstentions are not permitted. If you don't vote, it's a negative vote. In B C, abstentions are not permitted, the entire province, every municipality. A no vote is a positive vote. Brandon does not allow abstentions and neither does the R M of Portage. So, you know, we're bringing those forward to protect the interests of the municipality. Comments were made that as a counselor, I abstained. I agree. I abstained many times as a counselor. And I now know better. In the best interest of our municipality and to protect us, we go forward and we do better. So things that need to be done in a better way, it opens us up to risk. It turns into arguments between counselors in the minutes, which is not at all professional. And it also turns into accusations against staff. So yes, I abstained many times and we need to be going forward in a better direction. That's, that's why I was elected. We want to be able to reduce the potential, potential friction between counselors. And we're wanting to protect the best interest. So again, the sample resolution from Municipal Relations. I understand what council is saying. Everybody has had an opportunity to speak on this matter. I don't know that we go around the table again. We've all had our opportunities.
I'd like to address some things that you said about me, so I'd like to address them.
I, I don't think it's.
Oh, yes. You have said that you are now a judge.
I, I.
Mayor Christian, how would you like it if Mayor Henley did this to you? And.
Names here of other people that are not even here right now. So like this.
Very unprofessional. If there are no, I'm not going to have.
I asked to be added to the agenda and I was told to go and do a proper process with a writing to the C A O, which I did and you still refused it. You don't allow anything to be added to the agenda. I got an email from you saying, don't last minute add anything to agenda because the C A O needs to have time to work on it. I respected that. So when you say agenda, you have to define an agenda. You can't say, I don't know what the agenda items are. I don't know what constitutes an agenda item. And we haven't gotten any information from the lawyer. I didn't get any saying that we knew what the appropriate items are for the agenda. I mean, how would you like this if Mayor Henley did it to you? It's.
I, yeah, I, we're not going to get specific into attacks on former.
It's a form of bullying.
Not, not appropriate. It's not appropriate. What happened last term, this is.
But like a recorded vote.
Absolutely. I agree. In terms of legal opinion, we've had our municipal lawyer come into council to speak with us three times in camera as well as. On item seven point three, no, on the abstention item, we have also items regarding the reason the C A O has refused three requests for agenda items. Those legal opinions have been shared with all of council. We, we hire consultants in our municipality and rely on legal, on engineers. And we need to be able to trust that they're looking out for the best interest of the municipality. And if they're raising concerns about risk, then, then that's something I support, but it's, everyone is able to vote as they see fit.
This is justification for doing your own thing and, and refusing requests without any reason. And that's fine. That's what you're doing. That's what you're doing.
I, I think just to be clear again, reasons will be provided. So Laney, we've added that, that reasons, the mayor must provide reasons. So the C A O sought legal advice when he refused. I don't like to have staff attacked for refusing reasons and seeking legal advice. And now the, the attacks can come to mayor. That's what leadership is about. I'm going to read the resolution. Bylaw twenty twenty dash thirteen, being a bylaw of the real municipality of West Saint Paul to regulate the proceedings and conduct of the council and the committees thereof, and repeal bylaw twenty eighteen dash twenty-four be read a second time. Can I have a mover, please? Can I have a mover? Moved by Counselor Bichetti, seconded. Counselor Parag, any discussion and we'll call for a recorded vote. Counselor Link?
Yes, I had other parts of this procedural bylaw that I reviewed and, and, and would like some feedback from the rest of council on. May I?
There were no comments. There were no comments on that, Counselor Link. So we each had an opportunity to speak to the item and you shared your concerns.
Now, may I? Are we giving second reading or are we going to proceed through the bylaw to see if there are any other concerns?
We're giving second reading, but because there has been a change, we won't be giving third reading this evening. So you, we'll have another opportunity to bring up those issues.
But I have other issues about educational briefings, other issues about delegations, other questions to ask, and, and I'm not going to be allowed to ask them before, before this.
We each had an opportunity, Counselor Link, to go around, and so I went to each council.
No, I'm sorry. You didn't ask me if I have issues to bring up. I was responding to seven point three. But, which I had an issue on, but I, I also have other issues. And I wasn't asked about those.
Sure. Well, I've called for the question and there is discussion from council, so go ahead. Feel free to discuss.
Thank you. I would like to say, and I simply would like to state a comment about seven point five eighteen and the same comment about nine point two seven. The questions that the people, residents are allowed to ask must be based on current agenda. My question, which is not the last question I have and not the last section that I question. But if they're going to be, the questions must be based on the current agenda. When and how are, does this bylaw address if, if people have questions not related to the current agenda? Is this bylaw going to give some direction there?
In its current form, it does not. So residents are able to meet at coffee time when we have our coffee time. When residents have questions, they have all of our emails and phone numbers. They have the contact information of staff. So sometimes a, a meeting isn't the best place to stand up and address and raise the issue for residents because the C A O won't have the information to help those residents. And so that's part of what we do, residents reach out to us. We give the C A O or staff information, encourage them to fill out a request for service so that somebody can help them in a timely manner.
Very well, could I share my concerns about educational briefings and about delegations and a couple of final comments, please? I'm asking permission.
Sure.
Okay. Now, section eleven, I think needs to be amended. I think the purpose of educational briefings is to provide opportunities for council to receive information and training, just as it says. But I think it should be made clear by another statement, no decisions shall be made or significantly advanced. And the rationale for this amendment, rationales are, one, council's decision-making processes occur publicly as per section one fifty one, one fifty two, brackets one, and one fifty two, brackets two, of the municipal act. Every meeting of a council must be conducted in public. And everyone has a right to be present at a meeting of council. As can be seen in eleven four of this draft bylaw, educational briefings are closed to the public. So we have to be clear that decisions cannot be made or influenced for the future. In-camera delegations are not held in the public eye for specific reasons given in section one fifty three, brackets, three brackets of the municipal act. Significant decisions can be advanced in camera and can be used as the basis for resolutions following in-camera portions of meetings. I believe that the words including budget presentations, including budget presentations, should be removed. Anything in a budget presentation would be either to provide or to promote or discourage a budget decision. In other words, to influence a budget decision. You can't have that in a closed meeting, not in an educational briefing. I believe there's a need for clarification about how to differentiate also between receiving information at an educational briefing and receiving information at a delegation in camera. Now, before I go on to, also, sorry. I'd like to, the rationale for having notice of educational briefings being only forty-eight hours, just like notification for a special meeting. If the purpose of educational briefings is for council to receive information or training, why only forty-eight hours? And we should not only be allowed the topic, but we should be given some background information about what we are going to learn. I mean, it's a basic thing in teaching. You build up background information, what do you already know about a subject before you present new information, it's a basic. So along with notice, I would really like for council to receive information to consider that would enhance learning and prepare them for the content of the educational briefing. It's for training, it's for learning. And if you don't give background information, you're at a disadvantage. That's all I have to say about educational briefings. But I do have further to say, like I said, about delegations. But somebody else might want to comment about the educational briefings. Some councillor might want to.
Councillor Link, I just want to point out that the educational briefings as they exist now have gone through the old bedsman's office and the old bedsman was, was fine with the way we were doing educational briefings.
Thank you, Mr. C A O. Councillor Link, if you have any other points, we were, as our procedural bylaw, we have to keep it to five minutes a councillor. So if you're wanting to wrap up the points that you were wanting to make.
Excuse me, five minutes per item or five minutes altogether?
But it's part of our procedural and something to discuss.
I, I don't understand. Five minutes for item in this bylaw or five minutes altogether?
Everybody, everybody's had an opportunity to speak. So are you, are you summing up?
I'm, I'm not finished.
For everyone?
No, I'm not finished. Delegations, may I speak about delegations? No. Okay. One of the duties of councillors is to consider the welfare and interests of the municipality as a whole and to bring to council's attention anything that would promote the welfare and interests of the community. It's important to allow residents or citizens to make presentations to council at a meeting. And the procedural bylaw is the place to lay out rules for delegations. I think we need some kind of a definition as to what a delegation is. It's, it's, it's a presentation made by a resident or others on behalf of an organization or on behalf of the particular resident or an organization or an association wishing to appear before mayor and council. And presentations may be for purposes, and I think those purposes ought to be, some purposes ought to be listed, but allow room in this, in this bylaw for other reasons. And the phrase not limited to, but including the following, could be used. Delegations in the past, I know, have been soliciting, a purpose has been for soliciting municipal funds so that they could carry out a project deemed to be of benefit to the municipality and/or to the organization which they're serving or to the association which they're serving. Another reason could be to solicit support from staff or employees to facilitate putting the project in place. And another reason could be soliciting support for, for reconsideration of a council's decision. Not all-inclusive, but illustrative. Also, I think it's important that delegations be put on agendas on a first come, first served basis. That's fair. Also, I would like to add a, a statement to clarify whether or not council is bound to make a decision on the delegation at the meeting or will council take time to reconsider the information? I say this because I have wondered when delegations come to us, how do we, how do we wrap this up? What do we do afterwards? And it's never really clear. Council is not bound to make a decision on the delegation at the meeting. I think it's better to take time to consider the information. But once council has made a decision, I think that there needs to be a, a resolution made so that the delegates recognize the decision that was made regarding their presentation, the decision or decisions. And I think it's important that it be done in a, in a resolution that will be recorded for all to see, again, in public. Delegations should appear in public, that's only fair. Any comments about delegation, anybody disagree with me? Anybody agree with me?
Thank you councillor Link. So are, are you wanting to sum up your comments? We, we do have a section in our bylaw about five minutes on each question. No member shall speak to the question or in reply for longer than five minutes without approval for council. So we've all had an opportunity to go around and, and we've extended additional time to you and I appreciate the feedback that you're providing. But is it fair to the council?
My impression that was on any item that we had a concern about, that we could speak for five minutes, not five minutes on the whole bylaw or responding to what other people say.
I'm, I'm just reading right out of our procedural bylaw councillor Link. It's, it's not an understanding we have, it's, I know that you like to follow proper process and the process is. Do the question or in reply for longer than five minutes without approval of council. So I, I'm just wanting us to be fair and consistent that everybody has an opportunity and that one person isn't taking over. So we've each had an opportunity to go around and talk.
Yeah, thank you, and you have given me an opportunity to talk about delegations and about educational briefings. And I'll just leave the other two comments, I'll bring them up, third reading.
Good.
Are we doing third reading today? You said that we're not.
We're not. Third reading will come at a future meeting.
And Mayor Chris, or seventeen point five says, no member shall speak to the question or in reply for longer than five minutes. So could you interpret that as to the question or to a reply?
Councillor Buschetti?
The question the mayor laid out was to the bylaw. That's what we were speaking to. So it's all one, it's not one point by one point, it's the entire bylaw. That was the question.
And I will call for the question, all those in favor? Opposed? And that is carried, thank you. I'm going to, we are at five oh three. I'm going to give us a ten-minute break for everybody to be able to have a water and take a break and then we will deal with, actually, I'm going to make it fifteen, we'll take a fifteen-minute break. And we'll come back and deal with the final item on the bylaw so everybody can have an opportunity to have a break. Thank you, so back in fifteen minutes. Thank you. I'm going to give us a 10-minute break for everybody to be able to have a water and take a break, and then we will deal with, actually, I'm going to make it 15. We'll take a 15-minute break, and we'll come back and deal with the final item on the bylaw so everybody can have an opportunity to have a break. Thank you. So back in 15 minutes. Thank you. I'm going to give us a 10-minute break for everybody to be able to have a water and take a break, and then we will deal with, actually, I'm going to make it 15. We'll take a 15-minute break, and we'll come back and deal with the final item on the bylaw so everybody can have an opportunity to have a break. Thank you. So back in 15 minutes. Thank you. I'm going to give us a 10-minute break for everybody to be able to have a water and take a break, and then we will deal with, actually, I'm going to make it 15. We'll take a 15-minute break, and we'll come back and deal with the final item on the bylaw so everybody can have an opportunity to have a break. Thank you. So back in 15 minutes. Thank you. I'm going to give us a 10-minute break for everybody to be able to have a water and take a break, and then we will deal with, actually, I'm going to make it 15. We'll take a 15-minute break, and we'll come back and deal with the final item on the bylaw so everybody can have an opportunity to have a break. Thank you. So back in 15 minutes. Thank you. I'm going to give us a 10-minute break for everybody to be able to have a water and take a break, and then we will deal with, actually, I'm going to make it 15. We'll take a 15-minute break, and we'll come back and deal with the final item on the bylaw so everybody can have an opportunity to have a break. Thank you. So back in 15 minutes. Thank you. I'm going to give us a 10-minute break for everybody to be able to have a water and take a break, and then we will deal with, actually, I'm going to make it 15. We'll take a 15-minute break, and we'll come back and deal with the final item on the bylaw so everybody can have an opportunity to have a break. Thank you. So back in 15 minutes. Thank you. I'm going to give us a 10-minute break for everybody to be able to have a water and take a break, and then we will deal with, actually, I'm going to make it 15. We'll take a 15-minute break, and we'll come back and deal with the final item on the bylaw so everybody can have an opportunity to have a break. Thank you. So back in 15 minutes. Thank you. I'm going to give us a 10-minute break for everybody to be able to have a water and take a break, and then we will deal with, actually, I'm going to make it 15. We'll take a 15-minute break, and we'll come back and deal with the final item on the bylaw so everybody can have an opportunity to have a break. Thank you. So back in 15 minutes. Thank you. I'm going to give us a 10-minute break for everybody to be able to have a water and take a break, and then we will deal with, actually, I'm going to make it 15. We'll take a 15-minute break, and we'll come back and deal with the final item on the bylaw so everybody can have an opportunity to have a break. Thank you. So back in 15 minutes. Thank you. I'm going to give us a 10-minute break for everybody to be able to have a water and take a break, and then we will deal with, actually, I'm going to make it 15. We'll take a 15-minute break, and we'll come back and deal with the final item on the bylaw so everybody can have an opportunity to have a break. Thank you. So back in 15 minutes. Thank you. I'm going to give us a 10-minute break for everybody to be able to have a water and take a break, and then we will deal with, actually, I'm going to make it 15. We'll take a 15-minute break, and we'll come back and deal with the final item on the bylaw so everybody can have an opportunity to have a break. Thank you. So back in 15 minutes. Thank you. I'm going to give us a 10-minute break for everybody to be able to have a water and take a break, and then we will deal with, actually, I'm going to make it 15. We'll take a 15-minute break, and we'll come back and deal with the final item on the bylaw so everybody can have an opportunity to have a break. Thank you. So back in 15 minutes. Thank you. I'm going to give us a 10-minute break for everybody to be able to have a water and take a break, and then we will deal with, actually, I'm going to make it 15. We'll take a 15-minute break, and we'll come back and deal with the final item on the bylaw so everybody can have an opportunity to have a break. Thank you. So back in 15 minutes. Thank you. I'm going to give us a 10-minute break for everybody to be able to have a water and take a break, and then we will deal with, actually, I'm going to make it 15. We'll take a 15-minute break, and we'll come back and deal with the final item on the bylaw so everybody can have an opportunity to have a break. Thank you. So back in 15 minutes. Thank you. I'm going to give us a 10-minute break for everybody to be able to have a water and take a break, and then we will deal with, actually, I'm going to make it 15. We'll take a 15-minute break, and we'll come back and deal with the final item on the bylaw so everybody can have an opportunity to have a break. Thank you. So back in 15 minutes. Thank you. I'm going to give us a 10-minute break for everybody to be able to have a water and take a break, and then we will deal with, actually, I'm going to make it 15. We'll take a 15-minute break, and we'll come back and deal with the final item on the bylaw so everybody can have an opportunity to have a break. Thank you. So back in 15 minutes. Thank you. I'm going to give us a 10-minute break for everybody to be able to have a water and take a break, and then we will deal with, actually, I'm going to make it 15. We'll take a 15-minute break, and we'll come back and deal with the final item on the bylaw so everybody can have an opportunity to have a break. Thank you. So back in 15 minutes. Thank you. I'm going to give us a 10-minute break for everybody to be able to have a water and take a break, and then we will deal with, actually, I'm going to make it 15. We'll take a 15-minute break, and we'll come back and deal with the final item on the bylaw so everybody can have an opportunity to have a break. Thank you. So back in 15 minutes. Thank you. I'm going to give us a 10-minute break for everybody to be able to have a water and take a break, and then we will deal with, actually, I'm going to make it 15. We'll take a 15-minute break, and we'll come back and deal with the final item on the bylaw so everybody can have an opportunity to have a break. Thank you. So back in 15 minutes. Thank you. I'm going to give us a 10-minute break for everybody to be able to have a water and take a break, and then we will deal with, actually, I'm going to make it 15. We'll take a 15-minute break, and we'll come back and deal with the final item on the bylaw so everybody can have an opportunity to have a break. Thank you. So back in 15 minutes. Thank you. I'm going to give us a 10-minute break for everybody to be able to have a water and take a break, and then we will deal with, actually, I'm going to make it 15. We'll take a 15-minute break, and we'll come back and deal with the final item on the bylaw so everybody can have an opportunity to have a break. Thank you. So back in 15 minutes. Thank you. I'm going to give us a 10-minute break for everybody to be able to have a water and take a break, and then we will deal with, actually, I'm going to make it 15. We'll take a 15-minute break, and we'll come back and deal with the final item on the bylaw so everybody can have an opportunity to have a break. Thank you. So back in 15 minutes. Thank you. I'm going to give us a 10-minute break for everybody to be able to have a water and take a break, and then we will deal with, actually, I'm going to make it 15. We'll take a 15-minute break, and we'll come back and deal with the final item on the bylaw so everybody can have an opportunity to have a break. Thank you. So back in 15 minutes. Thank you. I'm going to give us a 10-minute break for everybody to be able to have a water and take a break, and then we will deal with, actually, I'm going to make it 15. We'll take a 15-minute break, and we'll come back and deal with the final item on the bylaw so everybody can have an opportunity to have a break. Thank you. So back in 15 minutes. Thank you. I'm going to give us a 10-minute break for everybody to be able to have a water and take a break, and then we will deal with, actually, I'm going to make it 15. We'll take a 15-minute break, and we'll come back and deal with the final item on the bylaw so everybody can have an opportunity to have a break. Thank you. So back in 15 minutes. Thank you. I'm going to give us a 10-minute break for everybody to be able to have a water and take a break, and then we will deal with, actually, I'm going to make it 15. We'll take a 15-minute break, and we'll come back and deal with the final item on the bylaw so everybody can have an opportunity to have a break. Thank you. So back in 15 minutes. Thank you. I'm going to give us a 10-minute break for everybody to be able to have a water and take a break, and then we will deal with, actually, I'm going to make it 15. We'll take a 15-minute break, and we'll come back and deal with the final item on the bylaw so everybody can have an opportunity to have a break. Thank you. So back in 15 minutes. Thank you. I'm going to give us a 10-minute break for everybody to be able to have a water and take a break, and then we will deal with, actually, I'm going to make it 15. We'll take a 15-minute break, and we'll come back and deal with the final item on the bylaw so everybody can have an opportunity to have a break. Thank you. So back in 15 minutes. Thank you. I'm going to give us a 10-minute break for everybody to be able to have a water and take a break, and then we will deal with, actually, I'm going to make it 15. We'll take a 15-minute break, and we'll come back and deal with the final item on the bylaw so everybody can have an opportunity to have a break. Thank you. So back in 15 minutes. Thank you. I'm going to give us a 10-minute break for everybody to be able to have a water and take a break, and then we will deal with, actually, I'm going to make it 15. We'll take a 15-minute break, and we'll come back and deal with the final item on the bylaw so everybody can have an opportunity to have a break. Thank you. So back in 15 minutes. Thank you. I'm going to give us a 10-minute break for everybody to be able to have a water and take a break, and then we will deal with, actually, I'm going to make it 15. We'll take a 15-minute break, and we'll come back and deal with the final item on the bylaw so everybody can have an opportunity to have a break. Thank you. So back in 15 minutes. Thank you. I'm going to give us a 10-minute break for everybody to be able to have a water and take a break, and then we will deal with, actually, I'm going to make it 15. We'll take a 15-minute break, and we'll come back and deal with the final item on the bylaw so everybody can have an opportunity to have a break. Thank you. So back in 15 minutes. Thank you. I'm going to give us a 10-minute break for everybody to be able to have a water and take a break, and then we will deal with, actually, I'm going to make it 15. We'll take a 15-minute break, and we'll come back and deal with the final item on the bylaw so everybody can have an opportunity to have a break. Thank you. So back in 15 minutes. Thank you. I'm going to give us a 10-minute break for everybody to be able to have a water and take a break, and then we will deal with, actually, I'm going to make it 15. We'll take a 15-minute break, and we'll come back and deal with the final item on the bylaw so everybody can have an opportunity to have a break. Thank you. So back in 15 minutes. Thank you. I'm going to give us a 10-minute break for everybody to be able to have a water and take a break, and then we will deal with, actually, I'm going to make it 15. We'll take a 15-minute break, and we'll come back and deal with the final item on the bylaw so everybody can have an opportunity to have a break. Thank you. So back in 15 minutes. Thank you. I'm going to give us a 10-minute break for everybody to be able to have a water and take a break, and then we will deal with, actually, I'm going to make it 15. We'll take a 15-minute break, and we'll come back and deal with the final item on the bylaw so everybody can have an opportunity to have a break. Thank you. So back in 15 minutes. Thank you. I'm going to give us a 10-minute break for everybody to be able to have a water and take a break, and then we will deal with, actually, I'm going to make it 15. We'll take a 15-minute break,
As special waste or items described in subsection 12.2. Council had also tasked administration to return with recommended language to add costs in the penalty section. And similarly to the burning by law, administration suggests replacing and costs with plus any applicable costs in subsection 17.0. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Shaw. I'll go around the virtual council table and see if there are any questions for you. I'll start with Counselor Prague. Any questions for Ms. Shaw?
No questions, Michelle.
Thank you. Counselor Bichetti, any questions for Ms. Shaw on this item?
No, thank you.
Counselor Kleiber, any questions for Ms. Shaw regarding the burning, the solid waste by law?
No.
Okay, thank you. And Counselor Link, any questions for Ms. Shaw?
Yes, I do. Do I need to list them all? List each section that I have concerns or questions about? Madam Mayor?
Yes? So you have approximately, give or take, five minutes to go through. I haven't been real picky on that, but you know, everybody gets.
All right, I have several questions. Start the clock. 5.1, if you buy an extra cart, you pay an extra service. In 8.3, you don't get service of pickup, but you don't get a rebate. That's, I'll leave that now and go on to my next question. 6.0, clarify biweekly. Biweekly can mean twice a week or twice monthly. Check the spelling on, in 6.0D. 6D, additional collection days may be scheduled for pickup of yard waste if authorized by council. I'm asking what this would look like? What will trigger council to authorize additional pickups? And collection days, and most important, will all areas of the RM have that special pickup service of additional collection days at the same time? And I'll go on. What is the dollar per ton?
So that we can have Ms. Shaw answer that, just so we make sure. So this covers all areas or RCAO, all areas of the municipality?
And so will I get time to list other concerns that I have?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
I want to make sure your question is answered. Go ahead, Ms. Shaw.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, the yard waste would be for the entire municipality and match the same collection day as your regular garbage and recycling stream.
Thank you. Go ahead, Counselor Link.
Just clarifying. So if east of the McPhillips or whatever new boundaries are drawn, both boundaries will get pickup, the extra pickup. Okay? Now, how about the comment on a section 5.1 and 8.3, which seems rather unfair? Those who pay for an extra cart pay for extra service, but those who don't receive pickup service don't get a rebate. Just perhaps I'll leave it there. And what is the dollar per ton rate for disposal of yard waste that goes to the composting area of Prairie Green landfill? As opposed to the dollar per ton rate for the garbage stream disposal? I'd like explained how 8.7A is different from 8.7B. Do we need both? 8.11? No, I'm not going to leave that. I think 10.2, the content is covered in section 9. 10.2 could be deleted. I think the section 12.6 could be deleted. The intent is covered in 12.0.
Having difficulty keeping up in preparing a response for the questions.
I think you were at 8.7. Ms. Shaw, do you want to go there? So the last one I can see you searching for is 8.7. What is the difference between 8.7A and 8.7B?
As I read it, damage resulting from noncompliance of the bylaw would is different from damage as neglect or willful damage. But if council wishes, they could combine those two points.
Combine it into one that if garbage or recycle cart damages deemed the result of noncompliance with any part of this bylaw or the result of owner occupants neglect, willful damage? Counselor Link, is that what you're suggesting, combining the two?
Yeah, I don't see the difference. In both cases, they've got to pay for the damage or pay for the cart. So what's the difference?
Okay, if you'll bear with me, I'll add that text.
Well, is this cutting into my, Madam Mayor, is this cutting into my five minutes?
He was watching the clock. He's not counting the question answering. Hardwood? He's not counting.
Your slow typing is not going to cost you.
That's your fast typing. Mine is slow.
Okay, so she addressed 8.7. What came next, Counselor Link, that you asked a question about?
Well, before, actually, what is the dollar per ton rate for disposal of yard waste that goes to the composting area at Prairie Green landfill? And then what is the dollar ton rate for garbage, the garbage stream disposal? Is there a difference in the dollar per ton rate of compost and the dollar per ton rate of the garbage stream?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Tonnage going to the compost is not charged, and I do not have the numbers for tonnage of our garbage stream in front of me. Thank you.
So we could ask for that though when it's tendered out.
Okay. Yes, I lost my place here. Okay. I think the content of, in 10.2, the content is covered by section 9.0. Maybe 9.0 can be deleted.
So 9.0, no owner occupant or occupy shall set out the garbage for collection unless the garbage recycle are placed as close as possible to the edge of the roadway without obstructing the road and sidewalk. And then the other that you're suggesting, which, what is the other number? 10.
10.2.
Collection cart supplied to the parcel shall be placed in accordance with the instructions of the municipality and in a location on the parcel designated by the municipality. Ms. Shaw, is there, am I wanting to explain?
I'll just take a moment to review those two clauses, Madam.
I'll just point out that the heading is times for setting out garbage and recycling carts and yard waste times.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Administration supports the deletion of that clause if council so wishes.
10.2, or is council okay with that? I'm seeing nods. Counselor Bichetti, are you okay with that? Remove 10.2. If Ms. Shaw is okay with it, then Counselor Kleiber, are you okay with removing 10.2? Okay, yes, we have, we have nods all around.
Okay, thank you. And I don't know what number 13.11 means, and I don't know what 16.1 means. The second part of 16.1, I find confusing.
So the first one is 13.11?
Correct.
Okay, Ms. Shaw, 13.11, no person carrying on building operations or alterations shall deposit on any street lane or public place any earth rubbish, surplus materials, or other garbage other than surplus materials.
It, this reads like they can deposit surplus materials other than surplus materials. That doesn't make sense.
I do see that duplication, Counselor Link. My apologies.
That's no problem.
Okay, and your next one, Counselor Link, that you had mentioned?
16.1, the second part of 16.1, I find confusing.
So no person by him or herself or other person shall deposit in part or in whole any dead animal, fish, and/or poultry, afoul, manure, garbage, fruit, vegetables, et cetera, filth, or anything which is or may become prejudicial to health upon or into any street lot, ditch, pond, stream, river, well, or storm drain, or onto any lane or premises, provided however that the provision of this section shall not apply to proper disposal of any such material, excuse me, into the landfill or a recycling depot with the consent of the RM of West St. Paul and providing further that it complies with and the regulations of the Environmental Act.
So I don't know, get what all that means.
So Ms. Shaw, do you want to expand on that?
Certainly, Madam Mayor. I, it it speaks to depositing, as you can see, there's several things. Animal, fish, poultry, manure, garbage, et cetera, et cetera. Anywhere, not just specifically in the garbage or recycling streams, it just cannot be deposited unless it is in compliance with the Environmental Act. Does that help clarify? So things that would happen is, you know, for an example, timely during hunting season, how do members of the community deal with their wastes from, from that occupation? Things, things like that. It just provides guidance and refers people to the Environment Act.
I understand that counselors are not to try and wordsmith. That's been made clear. But I think something could be done in the wording here of 16.1 so that the meaning is very clear. Because to me, I don't know about the rest of you, but it's not clear. You shouldn't have to take time to figure it out.
And do you have a suggestion, counselor?
No, I'm not wordsmithing. I'm leaving that up to you. I'm saying it's not clear. It's confusing. Perhaps it could be made clearer. If it can't, it can't.
Counselor Link, can you, could you give us a hint which part do you don't find clear? Or is it the whole thing?
The part from however, the second part, however.
Okay, let me read it one more time, and then I saw your hand up, Counselor Kleiber, I'll come to you too. So however, that the provisions of this section shall not apply to proper disposal of any such material into the landfill or a recycling depot with the consent of the RM of West St. Paul and providing further that it complies with the regulations of the Environmental Act.
The way I understand that, that's giving us the ability to, if someone is disposing something, that if we approve it, let it happen.
Well, aren't bylaws supposed to be easily understood by the residents?
I mean, we could take this away and, and look at it and see what we could do to make this clearer. We could certainly also talk to the waste people and get some clarification there. I don't have a problem, Madam Mayor, of making this clearer for council of council besides if they want us to go back and make it clear that if council wants to go with the way it is, I'm good with that all.
Thank you. So I'll just go around. Is everybody wanting clarity on this or to leave it as is? Counselor Prague, leave it as is or clarity?
Well, I think we should have some more clarity. And, you know, as Counselor Link said, it's very hard for, it would be very difficult for some people to understand this thing. The easier the better. And I agree with her.
Thank you. Counselor Bichetti, more clarity, okay, the way it is?
For more clarity, I understood what it meant, but if, if that's just myself, but if we need more clarity, we get more clarity.
Thank you. Counselor Kleiber, are you okay with that as well? More clarity on this one?
Yeah, one thing that's not covered in this, I'm looking at it now, is liquids of a toxic nature. So somebody dumping paint or paint thinner into their ditch or anything of that nature is not covered under this bylaw. All it says is solid or liquid waste of an offensive nature. I think we need to be more specific that we don't want people dumping paint or paint thinner or anything that's toxic into a ditch, pond, stream, river. And garbage is too general. I think it has to be specific. Liquids of a toxic nature.
Isn't that, Counselor Kleiber, isn't that kind of under the conveyance of wastes, 15 and 15.1? Just trying to make sense of it.
It's not, it's not particular enough. It says solid or liquid waste in a vehicle. So that's, that doesn't cover it. And then solid or liquid waste of an offensive nature. Some people might not find paint offensive or paint thinner for that matter. So, you know, you could, you could you could be more specific in those ones and say that, you know, toxic, because it's toxic, right? And that can also go towards people dumping fertilizer, anything like that. That's toxic. Anything that's of a toxic nature. Like
You could leave that with.
Ditch. You could dump round, really, if you think about it.
So maybe can we leave that for 15 for Ms. Shaw to follow up on? And just see if there's a way to address toxic, something like paint thinner in that? We wouldn't want to add that to 16.1 because the second section of that, of that deals with what the RM would approve, right? So the RM might say a guy can put fertilizer in the form of manure on his field, right? But we're not going to tell people they could do anything other than properly dispose paint thinner. So I get what you're saying there. That's, that's not okay. So can we leave that? Mr. CAO, are you okay with that? Can we leave that with, with Ms. Shaw on item number 15 and 16.1? Look at those. Thank you. Okay. Counselor Link, were you finished your points before I then go on and make sure that we're?
I'm finished. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Kleiber, did you have anything else to add?
No, actually, that's what I was going to add.
Okay. Okay, so we will if council's agreeable, we can do second reading and we'll have this come back as well with recommendations on those parts for council to review. So I will read the resolution. Be it resolved that bylaw 2020-14 being a bylaw of the rural municipality of West St. Paul to regulate and establish controls over the residential storage, collection, removal, and disposal of solid waste recyclables and yard waste then to repeal bylaw 2015-21 be read a second time. Can I have a mover, please? Moved by Counselor Kleiber, seconded by Counselor Prague. I'm going to request a recorded vote again, Ms. Shaw. Any discussion again on this one? Hearing and seeing none, I will call for the question. All those in favor opposed, and that is carried. All right, we can go ahead and do a third reading of the Code of Conduct bylaw. There were no changes proposed and made to that this evening, so I will read the third reading resolution. Be it resolved that bylaw 2020-10 being a bylaw of the rural municipality of West St. Paul to establish and regulate a code of conduct for members of council, be read a third and final time, signed, sealed, and therefore passed as a bylaw of the rural municipality of West St. Paul. Can I have a mover, please? Moved by Counselor Bichetti, seconded by Counselor Link. Any discussion? Hearing and seeing none, I will call for the question. All those in favor opposed, and that is carried. And we are also able to, our burning bylaw, we have some changes to that. That will come back to us for a third reading. We can go ahead with third reading of the Canada Day bylaw. Be it resolved that bylaw 2020-12 being a bylaw of the rural municipality of West St. Paul for the purpose of creating a Canada Day Reserve Fund, be read a third and final time, signed, sealed, and therefore passed as a bylaw of the rural municipality of West St. Paul. Can I get a mover, please? Moved by Counselor Bichetti, seconded. Counselor Prague, any discussion? Hearing and seeing none, I will call for the question. All those in favor opposed, and that is carried. And we will have the procedural bylaw and the solid waste bylaw come back to us for third reading after changes are made. All right, we now have a couple of items to deal with in camera, so I will read the resolution to go in camera. Be it resolved that in accordance with section 152.3 of the Municipal Act, council do now move in camera to discuss matters that are in preliminary stages, not respecting which discussion in public could prejudice a municipality's ability to carry out its activities or negotiations and legal. And be it further resolved that in accordance with section 83.1D of the Municipal Act, any issues that are discussed are kept confidential until discussed at a regular meeting of council. Can I have a mover, please? Moved by Counselor Prague, seconded by Counselor Link. Any discussion? Hearing and seeing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor opposed, carried. And we are now going in camera. So Ken, I will ask that you take us off of live YouTube until we come out of camera.
Can I have a mover please? Move by Councillor Bichetti, seconded by Councillor Cleyber. Any discussion, hearing and seeing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor? Opposed, carried. All right. And we're just going to wait and make sure that we are back live. We are live. Wonderful. Okay. Thank you. All right. So we have one item for a resolution coming out of camera. Ms. Shaw, can I have you read the resolution?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Be it resolved that the Council of the rural municipality of West St. Paul authorize the CIO to continue negotiations with the business owner and tenants at 1201 Grassmere Road, and further be it resolved that council authorize the CIO to update and inform the affected parties of the status of these negotiations.
Thank you, Ms. Shaw. Can I have a mover please? Move by Councillor Bichetti, seconded by Councillor Cleyber. I'm going to call for a recorded vote as well. Ms. Shaw, any discussion on this matter? Hearing and seeing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor? Opposed, that is carried. Thank you. And I will, do I have a mover to adjourn the meeting? Move by Councillor Bichetti, seconded by Councillor Cleyber. Any discussion, hearing and seeing none, I will call for the question. All those in favor? Opposed, carried. Thank you. And that is our first live and recorded meeting going on the website. So thank you to everybody who participated and joined us today. Good night, everybody.